All right, six o'clock. It's called a meeting in order. Please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I would like to move consent item A off the consent agenda.
To the end or just off for the night or?
Oh, just off of consent. I want to have it. I have some questions for it. Okay, so you want it action? Pilot discussion. Oh, no, actual?
It has to be their action or?
Let's see, action.
Okay, then we will move. Excuse me, certified person. Yeah, certified personnel. Item A to action. And I guess we only have, so we'll just make it B.
That's right.
Okay, so let's start this over. Entertain a motion to approve. The new slightly revised agenda.
I made a motion to approve the agenda with modification.
All right.
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Right, so, excuse me. We jump right into, do I assume we have visitors signed up?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Oh, I don't have the deal.
Thank you.
Oh, I should be on here. I just gotta. Okay, it says, you may present a concern to the board during the time revised for hearing public comment. If this is the case, we ask that you prior to the start of the meeting sign in. Noting the topic you topic, excuse me, that you intend to address the board. Come to the microphone, state your name. Please do not reflect adversely on. On the political, economic view, ethnic background and character motives of any individual. Try to keep your comments concise, non-emotional and brief. Board is interested in hearing your concerns and your compliments as well. It is best to call the superintendent's office a couple of days before. The meeting, if this is not possible, you can ask the board to recognize you during the hearing section. We will start off with Monica Niemeyer.
I don't know where to go.
I, we don't have a microphone, do we?
Well, we.
Well, potentially it's me, so.
We don't usually have a microphone.
That's right.
We could put that, pull that table right there.
Yeah.
Because it's still on the camera. Selena's buffed, you know.
That'll work fine, thank you.
Chairs there.
So I'm going to be honest, everything. You said I agree with, I'm going to be honest with you, the emotional part is going to be hard for me.
Takes as much time as you need. Excuse me.
Monica. Floris Niemeyer, M O N I C A. If I'm aware, yes, dash, N I E, I mean, what you are, and I have grandkids in this district. So I would like to start by requesting. That my discussion of this board meeting be part of the public record and outlined in. Boarding meetings. Attentive pertaining to this. As I said, my name is Monica Floris Niemeyer. And on July 5th. I announced via social media. A recall the four members of the Prosser School Board. Peggy Deppes for District One. Andy Howe for District Two. Jason Reiner for District Four. And Gigi Aubrey for District Five. The recall of these board members is for the purpose of a new school board. Determining for cause the contract of Superintendent Matt Ellis. And the review of the other administrative positions. Your actions and hand decisions have led our school district into a liability. Of violations and misconduct for one. Ignoring statutes that govern district school directors. Two, ignoring statutes. That govern a superintendent. Three. Violation of union contracts between our district and its employees. Or. Violation of the master contract. Between the school and the Prosser Education Association. Five. Ignoring our own school district policies and procedures. Six. Ignoring statutes of the Public Meeting Stat. Seven. Creating and approving employment contracts that result in a conflict of interest. Eight. Abuse of district policies, district procedures, and the use of board resolutions for personal agendas. Nine, allowing and encouraging administration. To verbally or via email. Intimidate staff and threats of their job security. Ten, improper use of personal texts and email. For discussion of school board agenda items and communications. It is my hope that the new school board would. Take further action with a formal review of these violations. From the board, along with a budget review to be made available to the public and explained. And a review of the decisions from this board on the hiring, suspension and termination of staff during Matt Ellis's tenure. These reviews would be done with the intent of making as much of the public findings, public knowledge as allowed by law. We do deserve to have a clear picture of what has happened in the liability. The school district has been placed in from the choices. That have been made by the current board and what they chose to ignore. I also formally ask. That. That the new board, other than creating a balanced budget. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I can't see through the things, I guess it's. I guess take a minute, is that okay? I'm so sorry.
Take my time if you need, Monica.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Riley. So. I'm now formally asking. This current board. When. A declaration. When an emergency financial resolution was stated. Were there any other reasons behind it? Were there any other personal agendas to gain? Anything at all? I'm asking you now. Was the emergency resolution used to accomplish more than just resolving the school board's deficit? Would there be anything to say like? Well, he had a poor evaluation. You don't know the bigger picture. You don't know the whole story. There is more to the story. Have any of you said that to community members, friends or other PSD staff? Well, you have. And it was said to me in the text. After my first meeting where I spoke. And everyone else talked about Kevin. I received a text message from the board president. Good morning. So thanks for the few words. You added about us. Just so you know. This was not a decision we took lightly. There isn't much I'm at liberty to say. Or to add, but as usually there is more to the story. If it's an emergency final resolution. There can't be more added to the story. It's budget. And it's things are to be disclosed. To the community. It can't be that. This will be included. In the complaint. Filed with a judge for the recall. In the Facebook comments after that first meeting. An individual who's a relative here on the board is Kathy Aubrey. Stated, first thing, I think it helps us to know that there's the whole story about the budget. And how it still needs to be balanced. How would Ms. Aubrey know the whole budget? The whole story of the budget? What information does she have that we do not in understanding the clearer picture? In additional post, she then wrote. Matt does not make these. Himself. The board meets with him one by one. And they each have their time with him to discuss cuts. This is not something he does on his own. How would she know that? That is a violation of OPMA. You cannot discuss those things outside of it. Lastly, I want you to all know this. This is not easy for me. I truly do not understand how you do not see what is happening to the four of you. You are in a position of liability. Where there are individual monetary consequences on each one of you. You're going into a realm of liability where the board and the district cannot protect you. For the decisions you've made or the things you've said. And I don't understand why you don't know that. Some of these violations do not recognize you as a board, and we said, just said what I said, but I said, okay. So the law on this is quite clear. The district can't pay your bill. It can't. Richmond School District is trying to let the board pay the $5,000 that the three, the three board members owe. But the law is quite clear. This is a civil penalty. The first offense is $500. And each additional violation is 1,000. Honestly, you know what you've done, you guys can do the math on your own. I tell you, this is a fact. Not as a threat. But to also ask this question. At the end of this. What's going to happen to all of us? What's going to happen to the four of you? For us. We're going to be working to have plans to protect our district, our staff and our students' education. For the four of you. I truly do not know what you will face. All I know is I personally never wanted any of this for you. Our community will be different. And while it will start to begin to repair and move forward. I worry it will always be broken in other parts. Only one person in this mess. Is able to move forward, to move on, to pack up and start the hell over. He is the one that you've been listening to, and he's the one you've trusted. And that is why in my email exchange I had with Matt, when Peggy shared it with him. I told him. And I quote. I worry you are putting our board members. Into situations that they are unaware of with liability that could be accountable to. Accountable for personally to the person as a result of trusting you. So. You can think what you want of me, you can be mad at me. But I do worry for you, and believe me when I tell you. I'm fighting for you guys too, I'm fighting for all four of you, including us. I don't want any of this to happen to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Tyler?
Thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak today. This is the fourth time I've ever spoke to a school board, and it happens to be this group all four times, and I'm not one that goes out of my way to. Create controversy or even tackle hard issues. I'm actually a coach. I like to build teams. I like to work together to accomplish great goals. And so I come to you today. As a family and I that have invested in the Prosser schools. That have invested in Prosser athletics and the Prosser community. All I've asked is to sit at the table. To be heard, to understand what is happening to our athletic department. And yet, those requests have never received a response back. I'm trying to take my time to understand this new point five teacher, point five athletic director position. That. Was posted for one and a half days internally. That's odd. One and a half days. This posting, as well as every decision recently made surrounding athletics by the districts. Has left more questions than answers. And a strong appearance of unethical decisions being made. In particular, the illusion of an economic emergency requiring the elimination of the athletic director has proven. To be nothing more than a fabrication. As now demonstrated by the newly created point five teacher, point five athletic director position. If you would bear with me and we consider some different scenarios on the cost of this new formed position. We can quickly see it does not cost savings whatsoever. If you have a pen, I have some figures for you. First number is 99,616. That's the salary for our highest paid teacher. These teachers have master level degrees. If one of these teachers was to apply and receive. The newly formed position. They would receive their total compensation. Plus the additional $20,000 athletic director's stipend. For a total of 119,616 dollars. So let's consider that scenario as the highest paid scenario. According to our district's data, the average experience of a current Prosser teacher is 15.3 years. So let's take a teacher with 12 years of experience. With no masters. That teacher would make 79,625 dollars here at Prosser. If this person applied and received this newly created position. And given the $20,000 athletic director's stipend. They would be compensated at a total amount of 99,625 dollars. So with these two scenarios, there is minimal savings by eliminating our athletic director and implementing this new plan. However. We have not considered the price tag for replacing the point five teaching duties this person used to have. This new plan would require us now to find a part-time teacher to take over that teacher's teaching duties. For the purpose of this exercise, let's consider a teacher with seven years' experience. Willing to take on a half-time teaching job. Vacated by our new teacher athletic director. The cost for those teacher responsibilities would range somewhere in the amount of $35,000 a year. So now, if we add that cost. To the highest paid teaching scenario that we listed. And the newly formed high school athletics would now cost our district. Which, by the way, is much higher. Than the district-wide athletic director we just had. However, this position would only cover the high school. What about the averaged experience teacher? Well. If we were to add that $35,000 for the part-time teacher. The average experience teacher who now took over the role of athletic director would cost our district. 134,625 dollars, which is yet again. More expensive than the district-wide athletic director we just had. But there's more. What about when this point five athletic director needs to leave for the day? To travel with teams, go to districts, go to state. Go to monthly athletic director meetings, one for high school. How will those challenges be made? The pay for substitute teacher, which has been discussed by the board as being a challenge. And at times, using current teachers to cover those classes, which is an even greater cost than a regular substitute. Additionally, wouldn't this new point five athletic director be able to timesheet out additional hours above their contracted duties? For when we do go to state or we travel out of, out of area? Where will those costs be factored in? And again. I want to emphasize, this position only covers high school athletics. Yet, it'll cost more with this new form athletic director than it would have been to have the district-wide. Athletic director stay in his current position. Further, how will an outside teacher be hired for the point five teaching duties? That are being vacated by the new athletic director when we've had a hiring freeze? Or, better yet, if we have to go to an external candidate. How will the point five teaching position be added to our current teaching responsibilities? Quite frankly, the decision by the district to eliminate the athletic director has taken a very high toll on our community. The community that we are here to serve. Was this necessary? With the amount of disruption this has created for. Our teachers, students, coaches and community. And the risk of not having another levy passed due to the actions that were taken immediately after this current levy narrowly passed. Is it not a reasonable response? For our district to reconsider the elimination of the athletic director position altogether? Has this decision not harmed our community and students enough? While we might not always agree, when decisions are made above board. With full transparency. Honest communication. And with all sides at the table being heard, most can accept the outcome and move forward. This has clearly not happened for this decision. It's not my intent to come with problems, rather solutions. We all have been asking, and, and at last board meeting, Ms. Riley made the suggestion of. Having a teacher community member committee that helps steer the district. This is something that many other districts utilize to their benefit. It was unfortunate to hear no other board member or district staff support this idea. The lack of value and respect has been validated once again by the silence we all receive. I love Prosser. I feel blessed to have spent 10 years coaching here. I love our academics, I love our school, I love our sports, and I love our community. I am willing to put in the hard work it takes to accomplish us coming together. I firmly believe. For our community to be put back together, to accomplish missions together, a major step forward would be to bring back the athletic director. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I do have a question. I don't have clarification. Are we getting a teacher that's going to work half-time, we're paying them full-time plus the 20,000? Or is the intent to have a teacher and pay them half-time? And then pay the $20,000 stipend? And then with, so I don't know. Which, which of us?
The position was posted as halftime athletic director, halftime teacher. And with additional stipends, so it'd be a full-time position with their teaching half-time and athletic director half-time.
Okay. It's still like, I don't, I'm hot and I'm asleep, so.
Okay.
Salary-wise for the teacher? Where, what's the range?
A beginning teacher, probably about 45,000, end of the road teacher, about 99,000.
So are they going to get a full teaching salary or a part-time teaching salary?
No, they would have a, it's kind of like a teacher, so they'll have a full teaching salary plus the stipend.
Plus the stipend.
Yes, and so like Tyler was giving numbers, his numbers were very accurate. Um, athletic director, the cost of athletic director comes out of levy. The cost for teachers comes out of teaching, depending on what it is. Basic ed costs, if it's a program teacher, it might come out of program, so. The cost, he's very accurate on his costs, but the budgeting would be in different places.
Okay, and then so for supplemental pay, which all teachers and staff get, so. Anything, is it after hours or just if you're traveling away?
That 99 that, that he's talking about, are you talking about the stipend or the extra hours?
Extra hours, so if you got a track on Saturday?
That would be all encompassing, and the $20,000 is for supervision, so there wouldn't be extra hours outside of that.
When is it, when there is the extra hours, which salary is it based off, the stipend or the teaching salary?
So the, the teachers get X, already get hours, that's what, how they get to the 99,000, or there's a percentage of their time that's extra hours, enrichment hours. And then. The additional 20,000 for this teacher would be around the athletics.
Okay.
I don't know if that answers your question.
So Tyler's numbers are accurate.
His numbers as far as what it costs us for teachers is accurate, for a teacher, and this is a teacher position, so it would be paid the same way.
And that doesn't include middle school sports at all, we have to have somebody else do that. Separate from that half teaching, half a day, or is it envisioned that the AD stipend would cover the middle school?
No, the middle school, the responsibilities for athletic director will return to the system principle the way we had it in the past.
So we're not, we're not saving money?
The discussion, the discussion the five of us had. At the last time was that it was going to be a half-time teacher, which would be half salary and half AD. I know, that's what I.
That's not what the job's supposed to ask, so for, for a. The difference is in the, where the money is budgeted from. For the, where the money comes, what account the money comes out of. So when you have a full-time athletic director, the whole 140,000 plus benefits, which is 180,000, 190,000. Comes out of the levy. When you, if it's, even if it's the same person, if they were teachers and say it was even the same amount, a portion of that would come from basic debt for their teaching portion. And then the other, the only half of that would come out of the levy. That's the, that's the savings. It's not technically savings in the amount that we're not spending the money because we have to spend the money, they're still going to be teaching. And they're going to be doing that, like, athletic director responsibilities, so.
But if they're only teaching half-time, that's, that's what I don't understand, why would?
Because the other half is their athletic director time. So you're still paying the full salary. They have half of the day they're working an athletic director, half the day they're teaching. Well, two periods and then they have probably a pre.
Yeah. Makes sense.
And answer your question.
That's, that's what it is.
I just want to make sure that every, because Andy, you thought it was going to be a half-time teaching salary. How about Peggy and Gini, what did you guys think? Because I didn't know, that's why I'm asking.
That's what I thought, half-time teaching, half-time.
You thought half-time teaching salary?
Right.
How about you, Peggy?
I, I thought it was going to be paid. Exactly as it was posted. And it is.
I didn't understand the process.
Point five teaching, point five.
Athletic director plus.
Which is an FTE.
Teaching is based off qualifications and experience and then, so being paid as a full-time teacher.
Full-time person.
And then an additional $20,000 on top of that for the athletic director.
Okay, but they're going to get a full teaching salary.
Full teaching.
Yeah, I understood that.
Based on their qualification.
What we're using for the rate of pay.
Right.
Okay, right. So the full salary is what Tyler.
A full salary based on whatever their.
And their only responsibilities is at the high school, not the middle school.
So we still have this, so much the middle school do.
And the middle school is covered at the middle school, not at the high, not with the high school. No longer.
So they'll be separate?
Yes.
I saw Matt hit unmuted, I don't know if he wants to.
And then.
And that's what we have.
Are we going to need a sub for that teacher? Because I mean, that's a good point, how often will we need a sub?
We have permanent subs that are roving subs. Right. We'll be able to utilize them in this process. It was always, the model that was in Prosser was always a full-time teacher that was relieved of their. Part-time athletic director work, and so we'll be returning to that model.
Yeah.
Okay.
That doesn't change it. Now.
Did that clear things up at all for you?
I don't know, what's your question, Monica?
Well, he raises his hand, so I was just thinking, thinking about.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
I taught a couple of you, I was in education for 40 years. Chairman of the English Department for about 30 years. Wrestling, coached football. I would be really curious. How. A half-time athletic director does a full-time job.
It happened. Did that in the past, so when you were a teacher at the school, Dan, that was the model that was used. And so I think that we could revert back to that and that that person could fill the role. We're removing middle school from that. And so I think that increases our ability to have that person be able to carry out that job. Plus, there's also a game manager position. Within the PEA contract that that person can assist. In some of the supervision of the athletic direct, or some of the supervision duties that the athletic director has. We also have security officers. Um, in some of the supervision of the athletic direct or some of the supervision duties that the athletic director has. We also have security officers. Um, that can assist in some of the supervision as well.
In those days, there were four boys sports and three girls sports. Not the case now.
How many was the graduating class? Say, how many students were? And the graduating?
Hundred and eighty two.
What, how big is the graduating class that let's say twenty twenty two?
Two seventy eight. Twenty six. No.
I'll respond to that, huh?
And what, what did you say? You said two twenty, how many? I think I graduated with a hundred and twenty nineteen ninety two.
After question, if you have a question.
Um, also, Deanna, thanks for letting us speak out of turn and addressing this. I don't even know if this is right, Robert. This is following his law. I don't, I don't know where it is. Where I'd be confused. I'm gonna, my level of knowledge is probably right about there. So I'm looking at this lots of money because I take it whether it's your money. So if you have this pot of money here for that half a teacher, this pot of money here for the half the AD. And then this pot of money you use for the subs, when the half AD is gone for half a day or maybe a full day when going to state. And then you still have the pot of money to cover the middle school. Here's my question. When all is said and done, and this money goes down and this money goes up and this money goes up and this money goes up and this money goes up, this money goes up. Where are we in the scheme of things? I know we have, you have budget categories and I, I, I understand, I understand how that works. My, I guess I'm very perplexed is you can truly say, oh, we're saving money. But you're saving money in one aspect of, of that goal, that position and the duties and responsibilities of that position. What other pots of money are then utilized which increase pay? The other question is those pots of money that are, that then have to have additional money pulled from them. How are they funded? Is it from levy? Is it from, you know, I know there's a bunch of things. That's where I get confused. Is there any way to actually, does that make sense at all? Is there any way to actually look at it? So at the end of the day, what you think is saving money is you're really like this and this and this and this.
So I think there's just, I think it's something that's going to be hard to like completely quantify down to the penny. But ultimately, if you look at it as the pre formally paid the hundred with benefits, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars or whatever out of levy. You're now looking at probably paying half of that or a little less than half of that out of levy. So there's a savings in that portion because all of our athletics, there's no there's no, there's no pay, nothing's coming from the state for that. Okay? The actual teaching responsibilities are teaching responsibility. So it, that truly depends on where they teach. Because honestly, if it was a person who taught bilingual, for instance, their pay would come from bilingual and the sub cost would come from bilingual. If it was a person who's basic ed, like a math teacher or a art teacher, then the pay comes from basic ed and the sub cost would come from basic ed. So um, the cost will be the same, but they, you're right, they're going to come out of different pots of money. It's not necessarily going to change the total.
So what we do know then, and I'm so sorry to so I guess we have to look at facts that we do know. So we do know that we need an AD and the fact is we're looking at half an AD and half teacher. That AD needs to cover, be available for high school sports. Okay, the schedule is a fact we know. So we would know when he would be gone and we could determine how much the roving subs, am I saying that correctly? The roving subs would be needed. So with that knowledge and those facts that we're looking at, was that included and discussed and thought of in the bigger picture to make sure this was actually a cost savings?
I think that the only thing you can guarantee that the person has to be gone. So you'd be covering probably, they only have, I have a five period days, so probably two periods. Here at the high school would be athletic director meeting days or district five meeting days. Um, I believe they meet once a month. Um, and then if you, if you, I mean, you maybe you look at past history and try to predict how many days you might have a state. You know, someone at state or some sort of playoff or something. So that would be a little harder to quantify, but you probably could try to come up with an estimate.
It really wouldn't have a big picture till the end, but bottom line is for this, this position, this scenario to work. Other resources will have to be used and allocated to make this happen versus before where the AD covered the high school and the
That is correct. At times that would be correct. I don't, I don't know.
Thirty five year employee who's given his life and service to this district. If he would have been interested in being halftime teacher, halftime athletic director, because that seems like it'd be the most respectful thing to do, would it not?
Yeah, yes ma'am.
So Deanna, you were talking about if this person came from bilingual, then that money would come from bilingual. And that just makes sirens go off in my head as to which population of the school it's going to have that part of their education jeopardized by not having that teacher in the classroom. If it happened to be bilingual, that is one of our highest risk populations. And then there could have even more risks.
Yep, that's just an example, but yeah.
But my sirens.
Um, I just have a question and it keeps going back to like, you know, Prosser used to have a part time teacher, part time athletic director. And I just want to know, when was that um, part time teacher, part time athletic director position actually turned into a full time athletic director position?
I, I can't, I, I can't, I'll do my best. It was before that. I, I can do my best to give you a history. Pre with previously it was a part time teacher, part time athletic director. It became an assistant principal athletic director, maybe then late nineties. Um, and then it was that for quite some time. So they had assistant principal responsibilities and athletic director, which would be, I would say even harder than teaching and athletic director. And then it did not become a correct me if I'm wrong, Matt and whomever, but it did not become a full time athletic director position until Kevin returned to the district. That's when it became full time with the middle school and high school combined. We've never had that before.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's always, it's always been split between either teacher AD duties or AP AD duties. So the only time we've ever had a full time athletic director uh, was, was with Kevin to try and I guess test, test that position to see if that worked within our district. So yeah, it's, the position's always been split with other responsibilities.
Excuse me, can I get your name? Morris?
Peggy, that was two or three years ago when that changed. I mean, Deanna.
Yes.
It was two or three years ago when that changed.
And then COVID, yeah.
The full time athletic director was two years ago. I, I see Ann Adams, but Keith again, I think it's actually it was Kevin. Kevin was an assistant principal athletic director. He started as athletic director and teacher and then there was, then the district chose to make that a assistant principal athletic director. And that was when I was a teacher. That was a long time ago. And then, um, yeah, we've had Anna Fazari, we've had Brian, we've had
Casey.
Casey Gant. Through, through all that time, that's what they were, that was what it was for most of the time.
So Casey Gant wasn't full time AD?
No.
Mr. Bailey wasn't full time?
No. This is the only time, no, this is the only time we've ever had a, the last two years, only time we've had a full time AD.
Yeah.
This scares me sideways. I've seen, I've seen athletic directors work from Mel Bowden up to the rest of them. My version takes a lot. You have no idea. You really have no idea. Gosh, I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you, guys.
I know there were people on Zoom that had questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even thought to look up.
We have, we have had one person, I believe, asked, I don't.
Well, whoever.
Yes, it's me, Rachel Phillips.
Ma'am, go ahead.
She knows I have a question after Rachel as well.
So uh, when Kevin was athletic director, he always included a parent on the interview committee. No, has anyone been asked to be on the interview committee? Who is on the interview committee? Because again, you know, we have no idea who's hiring this person that was posted for one day. Can you answer that?
Well, technically, I think they're still going through apps or however you want to word it, but I don't know. I was
That somebody from our community is on that committee.
There will be community members on the committee.
Thank you.
Excuse me, this is Renee Martinez. I'm on Zoom. I have a question.
Hang on, I'm writing as quick as I can.
Renee Martinez.
Oh, Renee Martinez. Thank you.
All right, go ahead. Thank you.
Um, my question is um, about the status of hiring a girls soccer coach for the season.
We'll be working on that. Um, I received your email and know that Brian was CC'd on that. Our principals usually take some time in July to recharge. And so uh, once we get going and once uh, the principals are, are ready to kind of come back. Um, that will be first thing that we do is get a girl soccer coach.
I am really sorry and I mean this very respectfully, but I don't find that a sufficient answer because you had in a board packet. In June, you hired a football coach. And the girls are practicing but don't have a coach with a contract. And how is that equitable? Or how is that work for liability? It just doesn't seem right to for safety, for liability, for students to be practicing. I don't understand the timeline here when it was open way before school was out and could have been addressed before school was out.
Didn't realize it wasn't.
Well, and Mindy Tidball has been volunteering since I think early June, the Record Bolton had a story on her in the soccer team today front page. And I mean, I think that's a good question. What's, what's our liability exposure with a volunteer? They're traveling, they're practicing. And I, I agree with Renee's statement. How did we hire a football coach? Over a girls soccer coach that's, you know.
I think we just approved a volunteer football coach. I don't think we hired one, did we?
Well, let's follow up and find out.
Yeah.
I, I can respond here. So typically athletic duties are the duties of the athletic director. So I usually am not involved in any of those hiring, hiring of positions in athletics. Uh, so what I do know is that the last week that Kevin was in, was in the building. I believe they did interviews for both boys and girls soccer. And I thought that they had hired both a girls and boys soccer coach. My understanding was that Mindy Tidball is actually our coach.
It hasn't been in a board packet for approval.
So that's the question then is.
Well, we need to try and get ahold of her and find out and if she's not, offer her something for doing it. Yes, Matt?
Again, this is Renee and maybe it has been decided or, but all the papers have gone through, but it just hasn't come through the board. And so it appears that one sports team is valued and their coach gets hired while we just say, oh, it's summer and soccer just has to limp on through. So I don't think that's the message you're trying to send. I'm just saying as a parent, it appears that way. So if we could maybe just check it out and see what has happened because it is summer and people are on breaks and things might have, you know, fallen through the cracks, but just as a parent, it's worrisome. Thank you for listening.
Make sure it gets looked into. Thank you. Any more hands? So we're, oh wait, we already ditched a uh, move to approve the consent items as revised.
I moved to have consent items, B and C.
Yeah.
I'll second hand.
All in favor, please say aye. Jump down to voucher action items, uh, which would be vouchers and payroll.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers and payroll as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second hand. I have a couple of questions. Okay, so I thought come in with a crate.
Nope, Becky, Becky's here. She's over here beside me.
Okay, okay Becky. So on okay, this is voucher nine zero five six six one, election reserve fund twenty one thousand nine hundred and seventy four. Is that the cost to Benton County for running the levy the second time?
Yep, the, the April special election.
Okay, and that's only Benton County and not Quicken Stop County?
Correct.
I think they charged us six thousand?
Well, I'd have to look that up. I don't have the answer to that one.
I also believe that was the cost to run it in February.
What number did you have? Nine oh?
First page, nine zero five six six one.
Okay, I just want to make sure I write them down correctly.
So I mean, I think the point the next meeting, that would be, I think that would be good. I think, you know, going forward, you know, we just did a two year levy. And I think it's important to remember the next time we do a levy, the effort has to be the first time to save us twenty one thousand nine hundred and seventy four dollars. My next question is next page. Nine zero five six seven six Jupiter Educational Services.
Yeah, that's Red Comet.
Okay, because it's the same thing as Red Comet. So I was wondering if it is possible. I know everybody has nothing but free time. Could we get a document put together, a spreadsheet of all of the different um, credit retrieval, online classes? And then what they cost and what they're used for to see if there's and we see these different names. Look, I didn't know Red, Red Comet was Jupiter. It's space related, I should have figured. But I mean, I, I don't know if we're doubling up. It seems like to me there, I, we are. So if I could see it in front of me, maybe that would help. And we could maybe eliminate something that is duplicative.
Red Comet and Edgenuity have both changed their names this year, so that hasn't helped us either.
And then there's a few more down from that is nine zero five six eight four for micro. I believe that's a Microsoft licensing, twenty nine thousand two twenty two.
Oh, that was one of Sean's, the projectors and the vocational laptop.
Okay, thank you. Okay, for the new school. For the remodel. Okay.
I will put this in the notes, Alisa, to have them work on a list of credit retrieval, the different.
Thank you. I think that would help.
On your list.
It's not a very long list.
Those are all my questions on the vouchers.
And I don't think Jason is on. Did you two? Anybody have any other questions?
I just wanted to make a comment that Sean sent us all a list this morning, which I thought was very considerate.
That would be awesome if I checked.
We have questions. You didn't get it, huh?
Oh, I probably did.
Oh, yeah, but I, I thought that was
I spent my day holding a baby. I could care less about email, right?
I don't blame you. I'd rather do that.
All right, if there's no other questions, I would ask for all in favor of approving the vouchers, please say aye. Oh, and payroll, I'm sorry. Still lies, I'm assuming. All right, we're good there. So then we're down to discussion items.
No, certificateed person, no.
Oh, that's right. We moved it on.
So I had some questions on certificateed.
I would do without you guys. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Carla Wyatt, Wyatt, has she resigned from her position for reading intervention at HMS? Are we going to replace this position or is this a position we are leaving unfilled?
No, it's a lap of reading intervention position. We need to fill it.
Okay, and do you know when it'll be posted?
After you, yeah, after you accept her resignation. We, I think Mike already has it posted and ready.
Okay, and that will that be the same with Samantha Rivera's position at the middle school?
Yeah, Samantha's actually was was internally.
And then the top Tanner Bolt, is that, is he still working under an emergency certificate?
No, he have, uh, we were able to get Tanner a conditional certificate, which gives him two, because he's far enough along in his program. And he's working on a middle school math endorsement to get him a, what can, isn't it can, which considered a regular certificate as far as the state's concerned, so not an emergency.
He he tell me how that works.
So um, the state has um, has certificate called a conditional certificate. And it basically means that the teacher, that the person that you're hiring is is working on some conditions to earn, usually to earn their certificate. Sometimes it's just somebody who has really special qualifications, like maybe you um, are offering robotics. And you have a NASA scientist that's available and wants to teach for a year. You probably could get a conditional certificate for them. We use them primarily for people. We we really only request them when we have someone close to being done. So Tanner, I think, just has a, he has three classes left. He's a field student teacher, and this will, they'll allow this to be a student teaching, so we wouldn't have to leave the classroom. We'll hire, we'll provide him a mentor teacher from the middle school.
Those were all my questions.
Okay, so all in favor? Of the new action item B that was moved from consent items, please signify. Oh, no, we still need a motion, yeah.
I moved to approve. Action item B, certificated personnel, accept the recommendation.
I'll second it.
All in favor, please say aye. Move on to discussion items, which is the Boys and Girls Club lease. Well, at least two of them.
So with the lease agreement, and I think Brian Ace is in the audience there. I had sent that to the board. Again, we work with, we try and work with the three-touch approach where the board um, is able to see it and talk about it at least um, two times before it comes for an approval vote. So this is kind of a chance to talk about uh, the agreement public and and ask any questions. And if there are any questions, uh, Brian, Deanna, and I can kind of hash it out. And then um, at some point, maybe the last meeting in July, uh, it'll go on the agenda for approval. Um, it may need to be moved to our work session. If, you know, if there are more questions, but we can obvi- obviously, we can um, also talk about it at that work session as well. But uh, this is just an opportunity to ask questions and the second time that you've been able to review it.
Okay, I noticed a couple of things. I noticed the first time have been updated address and little things. Were there any other questions on it?
I had, I had a typo. I can, it's insignificant, but it's supposed to be.
Let's fix it.
Also. And I actually, Brian Bailey answered my question. I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that the field, the practice field will be under the lease. And so the football team know, will know that and be practicing somewhere else. We don't have, okay. And I think best practice would be to have a legal description of the property attached as attachment A. Um, and then maybe.
Can the district provide that?
Yes.
Yeah, we can get Sean Mumford to look over it and review it. Um, he's looking over a couple of other contracts as well.
We, and I'm sure we have the legal description for the property because Craig has all those in his files.
I'm sure we do. I'd be shocked if we don't.
And and the county has that information too.
For sure.
Um, a few different consistencies. We refer to the CTE building. We refer to just the building. We call it a facility, and then we call it a site. I think you should pick one.
Does the district have a preference?
I would say ask the district attorney or ask your attorney.
I I, I mean, it's known as the CTE building. Once, i- if this lease goes through, it's not gonna be known as that anymore.
Then it's whatever you want to call it.
I mean. The building also known as the CTE building. I don't know.
I would defer to council. Typically, you have a definition section in the top of the lease or we'll say, you know, the CTE building and then in parentheses, the building. And then shorthand going forward, but I would say Sean Mumford or Boys and Girls Club's attorney would have that recommendation.
Yeah.
You don't want to refer to it as more different things.
I would agree with Alisa. It is a site and it encompasses beyond the CTE building. Um, so it's not just the building. There's other areas uh, in that agreement as well.
Well, that's a good point. So there are other areas. So are we selling the gym with the seats, not selling, leasing the gym? Or is there a first right of refusal to buy the gym or just the CTE building? And that's why it's important to have those definitions cleared out. Because I don't, I don't know if it is or not. It's not clear from the lease.
Yeah, my understanding, and this is a part of our discussions, was that they would have full-time use over the CTE building in a lot of the areas around it. The gym, uh, they would have access to. But the district would also, it would be shared access, basically. And so we probably need to schedule it out. If I'm wrong on that, Brian, you can state preferences or.
No, no, you're correct. The intent on that was not to have any of the outside of that single clause, any of the conditions of the leach, the purchase and sale agreement, the first right of refusal are not applicable on place.
So just on the CTE building is the first.
Is the name.
Would be understanding that the district desires for.
Going to be a problem.
That's not the case.
I hope not.
But you know.
Because if they make a days and theirs, I want to prove it.
Yeah, but I mean, that's the way things have been going. I know.
What what's your discussion?
Well, my my concern, I mean, I'm happy with it being Boys and Girls Club. But the way of the world is um. I mean, is it going to be a problem down the road for us that it's called Boys and Girls Club? And I'm sure you face that more than I do or or um. Is that a problem we just faced when we we have to face it?
I think it's a great question. And so this has been a conversation our local organization has been happy or happy and also the national organization. However, it is the legal name based on our affiliation with Boys and Girls Clubs of America. So it's a broader conversation than we necessarily can have on a local level. So if there was a change in name and branding on a national level that we did choose to reflect locally, at that time, we could do a revision to the lease update.
Okay, because I like Boys and Girls Club. I'm just want to go on. Like we're saying, I like Boys and Girls Club. But I know that there's um, there's been kind of a push out there to do them and theirs or or whatever. Yeah, okay, thank you.
I think, well, secretly, that's multiple inclusive. You got it covered.
Yeah. Could be the B and Gs.
Any other questions on the lease?
No.
Okay, so Matt, we then moved this to first official reading, or is this the first we moved to second?
Yeah, so it'll go on our next um, our next board agenda is probably for an action item. Um, and that's with the caveat that we'll have Sean look over it. We'll get a review. And uh, hammer out those definitions as Lisa had recommended. And uh, so when you see it next, there will be some some changes made to it. We'll also work with Brian on that. And uh, oh, you know, you'll have it in advance, and so you'll be able to look over it. Like I said, maybe it goes through one more time, but we're moving towards putting it on as the action item.
So so next, the next time we see it will be the first official. And then one more after that, if there's nothing in each change, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't have to go through a first and second reading like policy. Um, it is a contract agreement and so um, it can just be an action item.
Good enough. Thank you. So what else?
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you all. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Oh, we jump to reports. Ms. Flores, you're up.
I'll be relatively brief. Um, we're, my office is working on getting, you know, things here and just prepared for professional development to fall, especially our K five. ELA adoption, that's taking over. That's a lot of time and coordination. Um, I did do a walkthrough in the two elementary schools yesterday. And. I was pleasantly surprised that some of the progress that's been made at the Heights. It is still behind and it still will. We will be moving into the Heights for the fall, but there will be a portion of the building that will not be done. But it's. Um, well, there's going to be a sector, so four, four, five classrooms, four and a half classrooms in the library will not be done. There's, you know, been a variety of reasons that Fowler um, has. Via variety of issues, but um, River View will be done and ready. We're beginning to move in there on the first. Um, and we are moving things on the eighth into the Heights, but we won't be occupying until the fifteenth. It, it, things are looking good, but if you walk through there, you you might be a little bit scared that it won't be ready, but they ensure, assure us it's going to be ready. And there's a lot of people working on site, so. I was in Thursday, there was no flooring, and I was in Tuesday, and all the hallway flooring was done on them. So they they're moving, they they're, things that they have to get done, they're getting done relatively quickly. Jeanie had asked for um, a walkthrough. I may, if if Jesse Wilson comes down, I might send her with Jesse, and then I'll take her into the Heights. Um, if anybody is interested to walk through right now is a relatively good time to go. It's very busy there, but I, if you, if board members are interested, it can only take two of you at a time. But if you'd like to walk through, just let me know, and we'll find a time that works for you. And if it's not with me, I'll send you with Dan. But um, there, it's going to be exciting and to be really cool for staff. We, at the same time, we're, you know, moving out of the old high school, we're moving with Trent into the high school. Their stuff is actually already there. Um, and they've already begun um. The demolition at with Trent.
Drove by and seen the excavators the other day.
Things are moving.
Right, Mr. Ellis, what say you?
So um, I just wanted to, and I'll give Deanna the little brief time to talk about it if she wants to. So Deanna recently took a group of teachers um, to Seattle with Abbott. And um, spent some time um, working on professional development plans. Deanna, do you want to add anything about that?
Sure. I mean, that was a whole two weeks ago, Matt. Things go by fast. Um, I, we did take teachers from the element, all the buildings and administrators to um, our Abbott Professional Development. Kind of was a catch-up year because we haven't been able to attend for three, or well, two years, so this would be the third year. There are some local trainings we were able to do with some of the strands for some people, but not administrator trainings and such. We came back with a plan um, at every building with um, the types of activities, the types of um, student engagement. And uh, activities, the kinds of things are do around college and career readiness. But it was, it, we had some teams from each building and we all, they all have a plan that they came back with that they're going to be working on for school when school starts. So it was good and we, we had a really, it was a really good training. It was also. Kind of exciting to actually get to go something in person because we've done the training. There's been some online training, but it is just not the same. It's just not the same, just like it is for kids. It's not for adults. So it was, it was very refreshing, and I think people came away with a lot of really good, good things that they're going to be doing in their classrooms and in their buildings. Thank you, Matt, for reminding me.
Yeah, absolutely. So the um, I had a couple, couple things, and some of them are review, and then some of them are new. I proposed a kind of consulting contract with Craig Reynolds to get us through kind of this gap phase between business, business manager. When our new business manager comes on. Um, so we kind of need a finalized decision about that. I sent the board an email. We're close to getting a balanced budget, but we're still hundreds of thousands of dollars off. So we have another round of budget cuts that, as we had talked about, um, for um, classified, some classified employees that will be cutting. Patterson, uh, the kind of um, setting up a, an agreement with them. Um, as far as their payment uh, in regards to the bond in the high school. So we need to come to a decision on that. Construction, as Deanna had mentioned, um, just having Dan Purefoy come in and check where we are at the end of the summer because we still have those projects going on. And I know that that is important to the board, uh, to make sure that we get kids in buildings and that those projects are going well and that they're on time. I'd sent the board a cost proposal for uh, working with WASDA on a strategic plan. And so uh, we need to, and that kind of came about, I'd spoken with Jason and Andy about that. And uh, getting a strategic plan in place, WASDA does have services. Um, we'd also talked about WASDA doing professional developments for us around parliamentary procedure, team building, things like this. And so maybe a good start with a strategic plan. And uh, that strategic plan will also guide uh, how we allocate resources. And so that would be good. And then the last thing I had was um, student reps to the board. I I've been working with Brian Bailey uh, around that. And so we'll need to select some new student reps to the board uh, late this summer or um, early, early next year. And get some student voice on the board as well. And so those were the things I had to cover. There's a lot of kind of loose ends. And it's typical um, for this time of year during the summer to try and um, catch up on some of those and make some of those decisions and get ready and planned for next year. So that's all I had. Any questions?
Well, not questions so much. Have you guys all looked at the contract and the the proposed contract for Craig? Do we all be okay with it? No?
No.
Okay.
That's, it's a minimum of fifty days at a thousand dollars a day, correct? And gas. That is, we're in, I mean, that's not in our economic situation. I think, you know, this is the hiring decision we made. We knew when she could start. I think Becky's capable. Um, that is, I mean, that's, that is, I mean, that's not Craig's fault. I I would ask, you know, the same in the situation we're in, but I don't think that that is um, responsible spending.
I thought it was a maximum of fifty days, not a minimum.
Minimum.
No, I thought that was.
So part of the plan was um, there are certain things that are important this time of year. But one is the budget and getting that approved. One is year-end reports, and that happens in October, starting the fiscal year. Um, and then trying to onboard Amy, uh, since she'll be new to K twelve education and providing her with some resources and time. So I, you know, another option, and we haven't priced it out, would be to work with the ESD. To have uh, somebody with the ESD come in and try and work with us. Craig just knows the system so well. And um, yeah, I think that he would be a great asset to us. And so, yeah, other board members, what are your thoughts?
I'd like to, I'd like to see it on um. On for an action item for the next, so that we can all vote on it publicly. Because we have had, we have had uh, lots of opportunity to talk about this and discuss it, the pros and the cons. And uh, I think that the, at least my understanding was the pros well outweighed the negatives. Amy's salary was greatly reduced from what Craig's outgoing salary was. So we knew that that, the extra cost for Craig to get us through this process. This, this rolling into the new person was going to be offset that, those expenses would be offset by uh, the difference in the salary range. And I I, was my understanding that we were all on board with this. So I guess I would like to have it in front of all five of us for a vote and just be done with it.
So here's the contract. So ten days per budget, seven days for bargaining, ten days year-end reporting, three days enrollment beginning. Three days enrollment, actual audits, four days, contracts and inter-local agreements, three days.
So again, I'd like to have it back in front of all of us.
Five days and five days other.
And that was maximum.
But that's what it's outlined for. So up to fifty, so fifty thousand plus, yeah. Top two, but that's what it's outlined for, so up to fifty, so fifty thousand plus, yes.
Yeah, that was up to, so again, I like that.
You can pay mileage. And I think there needs to be a distinction between discussing something and agreeing to something. You can discuss something, doesn't mean you agree.
Yeah, okay, I still would like to have it in front of us all. Yep, I agree.
Jeannie?
Oh, my report. The only thing I had was I went to one of the dance recitals.
Oh, no, no, we're talking about.
I thought you wanted to record. Yeah, it would be fine of me to bring it because we can all discuss it before we pass it anyway. I mean, before it's voted on.
Yeah.
That's what I meant.
Okay, we'll make sure it's on paper then for the twenty-seventh meeting.
Good, thank you. Twentieth meeting, isn't it?
No, it'd be twenty-seventh, because the. The.
No, no, this is not, this is a, we're in the meeting again.
Yeah, yeah, the twenty-seventh to be a regular meeting, the twentieth would be a study session so you can't take action.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So to clarify, you just proposed a reduction in force even though you have land and money?
No, we're not talking about.
No, actually, we hadn't even gone there yet. We haven't looked at the proposed adjustments either. It's just, we're over and there's more proposed.
We encourage you to, to examine that very carefully when you begin that action. And that you do in fact consider selling that piece of land on this, this, or no, I. That you run your budget down, the lean schedule that will, your quarter.
Okay.
My confusion actually has nothing to do with that. It's overall, honestly, thought process and planning. It's my understanding that the, that Craig gave his notice in February. Is that, is that correct? Craig gave his notice in February. There was adequate time to plan, hire someone sooner. And save money by having to pay for two, I guess, two FTEs, or she could even work half time going through the process of the motions. I'm gonna be totally honest here, this is only my opinion. I find it very frustrating that the district has to pay for the superintendent's last minute actions. I know this has nothing to do with the board, but there have been very last minute actions in a lot of important places.
What we're talking about is Craig's contract. The reason that we're having this discussion is we as a board unanimously chose. What we thought was the best candidate. The best candidate can't move here until first of August or end of August. I don't remember what it is offhand now. There was a discussion about having Craig cover a little bit here, a little bit there. His assistant and then her working online to get through it. There's no guarantee that these days are all gonna be eaten up. These are just proposed days.
So, and thank you for that clarification. I did not know about that and I apologize. But it still is just, you know, it's like we're. We're spending more money than we're saving money in a horrible, awful place that affects staff and kids.
Well, and.
More, but, but thank you, I, I know, I know, it's hard to.
Again, the, the, the salary of the incoming person is considerably less than what Craig's.
That wasn't actually.
So we're not.
That actually wasn't. It was just the, the thought process and how things are being handled, but, but they.
So.
See what it would cost for the ESD as a comparison?
We can look, yes. All right, so. The next one, where was I?
Patterson.
So the Patterson deal, that was the next thing we discussed. We all know what the deal proposed was. Are we in favor of accepting it or not? I believe it was four hundred and fifty thousand one-time payment if we go that way. If it's any more than that, they want multiple years to pay for it.
We need to have that come back, though.
And it'll, it'll have to be, I'm just.
Is that, Matt, is that correct?
Yeah, it was four hundred and fifty K over the course of four years. Sorry, sorry, excuse me. It was four hundred and fifty Ks a one-time payment. If we were willing to, Monica had alluded to the fact that when I spoke with her, that they might even go as high as five hundred thousand. If we extended the time period out. So they do have a new superintendent and I, I think that there's room, but there were contingencies factored into that proposal. Like they never wanted their middle school students to have to pay for athletics. And so that was something that we had talked about in this time of, you know, very. I guess austere budgeting.
Okay, well, I'm personally fine with just getting it over with on the four fifty part, but as for promising. Promising anything special, they won't have to do anything more than our kids have to do, but that's all I can promise.
Right.
So.
What do, what do kids pay now for sports?
They pay for their ASB, just an ASB, what is it?
Forty-five.
Forty, at that middle school?
No, it's, it's a little bit less, not a kindergarten.
Thirty-five or forty, yeah, they pay for an ASB.
Yeah.
Yeah, so did the Patterson kids get a, a HMS ASB play sports then?
I'm, I'm not sure in the last couple of years they have. I know that they've been asked to get an ASB, but I'm not sure if it's a Patterson or if it's ours.
Yes, they get an ASB card.
How many people to show them?
Yeah, don't know who it was.
Okay, it was Rachel. Okay, so all of these things would have to come back though, Matt and Andy as action items, is that correct? Matt?
Yeah, they will need to come back.
So are we, where are we on the four fifty? Are we in agreement on that part at least?
Oh, yeah, we're broke. We need the four fifty.
No, I, I'm not arguing, I'm asking.
We have, we're in the hole, take the four fifty.
Well, the four fifty is designated dollars that have to go back into the high school.
We have, we have nothing to make those repairs to the stadium with and this would allow that to happen.
Jeannie, Piggy?
I, I just say, it's been on the, it's been up in the air long enough. We just need to get it settled.
Yeah, I'm not happy settling for that, but I will vote for it. They owe us a lot more. But I'm absolutely against giving them an agreement that we won't charge the kids. If Prosser ever got to where we had to charge our kids to play, we're sure not gonna let them play for nothing.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So that's where I'm at on it, also, Matt. I'm, I'm okay with accepting the money. But their kids will not receive anything different than ours do, one way or the other. And if that's, if that's an issue, then I guess we go back to the drawing board.
Okay, I will work with the superintendent on kind of basically getting some formalized agreement. They can, you know, I, I would assume that it would have to go to their board and it would have to go to our board as well.
And then again, if they decide they want to make payments, they can up the price a little bit. I'm okay with that, I guess, but. Either way, the, the concessions on the side are probably not gonna help.
Going into.
Yeah, and that kind of fits in. I had a, I had a conversation with Jason about. You know, when we're talking about these large scale facilities plans, updating Art Fiker. We're a year, we're at least a couple of years out from that. In deciding where those streams of money will come from and how to fund the project at that scale. And then even looking at if, if there are contingency funds left over on some of this large scale construction that we're doing at the elementaries. So, yeah, I, I think that if, if we gave them the option of paying it over time, then maybe they pay us a little bit more. I think that's reasonable as far as the district's concerned, because that money will probably sit and then we can decide what we want to do with the land, if we want to sell that. Of course, we talked about that, that money from the land sale does have to go into capital projects. It can't go into salaries or anything else like that. And so it, it would just give us more time to, you know. Plan for that and find the money for those projects.
Okay, so next on the discussion was the Wager, was the strategic planning. Jason and I both talked to Matt about doing both strategic planning for the district between us and Matt and probably Deanna, somebody from Wazda leading it for a long-term plan. Also doing some team building and some other stuff, Robert's rules, things of that nature. Are we in favor of moving forward on these, these classes?
Can we get like an, an agenda and a curriculum, a CV on what it would be and what it would entail?
I'm sure we could.
I would like to see that.
Yeah, so strategic planning is more of a process than it is anything else. And so really you're looking at distilling down ideas, incoming up with commitments and goals for the district. And, you know, positions you want to put the district in. And so that's a little bit. I guess that that's a little bit different than was to coming in and offering specific trainings with specific topics. They may not know how that strategic planning would go. And then, of course, there's a scope and scale on that. How many people do we want to involve? What are the different facets, you know, in strategic planning? Sometimes surveys are used, sometimes focus groups are used. But the most important piece of that is that information going to the board and the board being able to consider where they would like to lead the district. So this would begin this process. It is, it is pretty spendy. It's a thousand dollars for half a day. It's fifteen hundred for a whole day. And we're looking probably at a multi, multi-day process to develop a strategic plan and put something on paper. Again, it's an important document. Deanna, the year before I got here, did something with, you know, mission, vision, values. For the board, but a strategic plan would also help drive resource allocation, budget development, funding. Professional development, all these other things that we have conversations about. And so it's important and the board would be able to kind of. Make decisions about their vision for the district and where they would like it to go. And then that would drive Deanna's and I's actions.
So did that tell you what you need to know? You still want some curriculum and stuff?
Oh, yeah, I want.
Want to move forward?
I want, of course, information, I mean, it's not on my agenda for approval. Yeah, we're just discussing, so I, I mean, before I would commit spending that money, I would want to see, you know, of course, description of what we're going to do.
Yeah, I can actually put you in. One of the trainers. Cindy McMullin is a trainer who we have used in the past. She's a board member and was the trainer. She's a board member for Central Valley School District. She's also an attorney. So she's worked with in the past, us in the past, and so she might be able to kind of walk you through what that might look like. I'll also get and reach out to her and get information and then I'll share that with you.
It sounds good. We get something on paper to look at?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think we want to know what we're spending money on.
Oh, no, I agree. It's not worth doing.
Have a defined process that they use. They must. I mean, they must.
They do a lot.
Yeah, I'm sure they must.
And when do we need to start looking for student reps? Not till August, isn't it? I guess August is close, huh?
It's probably kind of hard to get applicant, kids are out and about, but maybe if you opened it close to school started.
We actually opened it once already.
Okay.
And didn't get any applicants.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Then I discussed that.
Additional cuts to staff. Additional budget cuts.
Until we get them in front of us, I'm not gonna bring it up.
And that they have to be junior, seniors or?
Junior, seniors, predominantly seniors is what we've. So what we got left at this point is board reports. Lisa, anything good?
What's, what's, what are you guys passing notes about? I'm not allowed to pass notes from class.
So the note I just.
Actually, it's actually, and I'm a joke, but it's also against the public meeting act. You can't pass.
The note I passed to Deanna is, would you be willing to do it again, referring to the training she did a few years ago?
Oh, that would be great.
And there was a big heavy side, so I took that.
That would be fantastic if you had Deanna do it and save money. That's a good option.
That didn't go the way you thought, did it? I'm sorry. I was no good at passing notes in class either.
Sighing always. So I need to have a note about discussing the soccer coach. I've had parents reach out to me about that and then I saw Mindy in the paper today and I know she's been volunteering. I know that that interview happened with Mr. Luck and so I don't know where that approval is, but I mean. What's, what's our liability exposure? The kids are traveling with her, she's coaching with them. You know, that is something that needs to be addressed as soon as possible.
I agree.
I have that on my list.
So who, who is doing the AD work right now? That was a question by Zoom as well. Is that just kind of just piecemeal, whoever had the chance to do it?
I think at the moment, yeah.
Okay.
I think Matt was stepping in on a bit of it.
And one question that was good was brought up on Zoom and facility request using the gym is usually handled or was handled by the AD. Is that if someone wanted to rent and use the gym, who would they talk to tomorrow?
Yeah, they can send that, they can send that to me or to Selena. We've been running that through the district office. That was a duty that was done by the district office by Sean and Danny. And then I approved them before we handed that duty off to Kevin. It made sense because of, some of the facilities are athletic facilities that people want to use. So it kind of fit within that domain, so we'll be taking that responsibly back at the district level.
Okay, and I want to tie that into a discussion about gym use for AAU and then like the city of Prosser and using it for Monday, not Monday night, but, but, um. Basketball. We, my understanding is AAU can access the middle school gym like once a week. Right now, and I don't know if that's accurate, not, and not during the summer. So reopen as a board and district to allowing more youth, clearly school. You know, sports and activities would have priority, but I think that we need to, you know, think about our partnerships with the city, with AAU and, you know, let them. You know, if possible, have more gym use and who would they talk to about that?
So AAU gets the gym any nights it's free. Now, summer is a different issue because we don't have anyone that alarms or, I mean, and the custodians are gone at three o'clock, whereas during the school year. But I, I think they use the middle school any night. It doesn't have athletics or activity. Yeah.
And that's a mix of predominantly AAU.
Yeah.
But I know when Kevin sends out his email, he's talking to the AAU coordinator, the city and others that have asked to use it.
Okay, so the middle school.
Little guys wrestling and others, I don't know if they've been in the middle school lately, but.
Sorry, our gyms are both open and full usually till nine.
Okay, so the gym at the middle school, I don't know, that could be any school, are open at till nine PM and can be used by community members if they follow the process. Okay, and then you could, they could use them in the summer up until three PM.
It, there, some of them are being used for high school sports.
Right.
But, yeah, I mean, if we do refinish floors and stuff, so usually by early August they're shut down. But we used to run summer league and all kinds of things, just nobody's really done that lately.
So who, so that, who should that request go to?
Matt.
Yeah, they can send it to me, to me, CC, Selena.
There's sometimes some, you know, competitive jockeying for facilities, great kids, soccer. Later on we get, you know, there's some club volleyball, things. I don't know if we've had a club team recently in Prosser, but we try to be fair. It's, it's hard though, but there's a lot of desire. We also have, you know, the high school gyms haven't really been able to be used because the way we had to set up for lunches. But that maybe at least one gym would be available at the old high school next year. And then we, I will say, we have not made the high school facilities available for AAU yet, but I certainly think AAU or any athletic or youth organization. I certainly think that should be on the table as well.
Or at least auxiliary, absolutely.
Well, I mean, as long as people, we, we give them rules and they follow them. That's what they're for. Great, tell you, break the rules.
We were talking about consultants and training. I attended a fantastic presentation on Sunday put on by a group that runs. I want to call it a shelter or halfway house. It's a home for sex trafficking victims in the tri cities. And their work, and I think that would be really beneficial for school staff to attend. It's, it's not a big city issue. It's.
Oh.
It's definitely, it's in our community. It's run predominantly by our local gangs that, you know, they equal sex trafficking, starting with kids as young as. As young as a kid as you can think of and up, and it competes with as far as dollars, as far as drug trafficking and trade. And I think that is something that we could consider for staff training or training. It was enlightening.
Who actually provided it?
It was by Mere Ministries and then the house, the shelter that they, call it shelter, I can't think of the perfect word. It's called Esther's House and it's in the tri cities. And they are one of two facilities just for sex trafficking victims in the state of Washington, just the two. And it, the work that they're doing is, I'm sure, exhausting and incredible. And it's, the work that they're doing is actually exhausting and incredible. My last issue I want to discuss tonight, this is something that I have heard over and over before I was elected. Erica Hartlett brought it up and Monica brought it up tonight. You know, we hear this reappearing theme that there's a, a culture of retaliation in the district. And I think we need to protect our liability for the district. If there's a whistleblower came like, hey, I said this, then it was used against me later. And I think we should have a discussion or call Sean. I don't think district should be involved and say, and Sean, Sean Mumford for. District council say, we need to contact Clearwiz and start an investigation to cut, to cover our end. We've, it's, it's too common of a theme and we want to make sure there, one, that there isn't, if there is, address it and then also protect our liability. And Andy, you could make that call or Jason, if you want.
Sorry, I write slow.
You're doing great. As long as it's right.
Some people would differ. All right. Jeannie?
Oh, okay, I just had one thing I started earlier. I recently performed, attended one of the dance performances put on in the auditorium. It was wonderful. And it pleases me when we get to see the public make use of this facility. It was very nice.
Piggy?
Been gone on vacation for two weeks, so.
Well, guys, my mind's somewhere else. I got a picture of a cute little baby girl on my phone and as soon as I'm done here, I'm driving back to Tri-City, so I'm good for the night. There's nothing else on our list except for future meetings. Study session July twenty, and just before that study session, which will be right here. I don't know if it's going to be Jason and I are just, I, we're going to do our safety security meeting. And then our next regular board meeting will be on the twenty-seventh, six o'clock right here. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.